All right, it is 5:30. I'd like to call this meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education regular meeting to order. At this time, if everyone could please stand for the invocation or moment of reflection and pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Ms. Bowie, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Lisa Eastep.
Here.
David Wortman. Stephanie Adams.
Here.
Nelson Bullier.
Here.
Judy Justice.
Here.
Jeanette Nichols.
Here.
Bill Rabinbark.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Before we move into our closed session, I would like to take a moment. I know this is not normally the time for recognition, but it's not easy to surprise this individual, so I thought we would get it done right off the bat. As some of you may know, this is Dr. Burns' last official regular board meeting as interim superintendent. Dr. Burns, when you first came on the board in March, I know you're probably mad at me for doing this, you knew our district had things we needed to accomplish. We had big goals, and from day one, you hit the ground running. Then the pandemic happened and continued to happen, and the planning changed, but the goals didn't, and your incredible work ethic didn't change either. Then the hurricane happened. Again, same story, change of plans, but the same goals and the same work ethic, and you said to us all, "Let's just keep working." You have faced every challenge we've encountered with deliberate grace and a thoughtful focus that has continued this district forward. You've lent us your wisdom, your spirit, and your tireless optimism these last few months, and for that, we all sincerely thank you. So, we wanted to give you probably your eighth plaque for your wall, but on behalf of the board and the district, we want to say thank you.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. No, this is not what I expected. Let me start with that. None of us expected this. What I learned very quickly about New Hanover County is what a special place it is. I had some contacts prior to coming to the district as interim superintendent, and I knew that there were special people in the district. I did not understand the dedication, the hard work, the care that folks have for this community and for the school system. And the work of all the employees in the district has just been amazing, as we've dealt with a lot of things that no one could imagine. It's easy to work hard when there is a great team, and there is a great team in this district. Every employee truly does care, and it's been impressive to me. And I can't say that I thoroughly enjoyed every moment. There have been times when it's been more of a challenge than I ever expected, but I can say that despite that, there's a good bit of joy in this district, and I have experienced and enjoyed that part of working here. It will not be easy to walk away, but transition's occurring. There is a new superintendent coming. I'm excited for Dr. Faust and for the district, and I'll be reading and watching, and I do have a connection just a bit further north, so I'll stay in touch. Thank you for the kind words, and board members, I do appreciate all of your work and your support, as together, we have navigated this really unusual, uncertain, unprecedented time. So, thank you again for all the things that you do.
Dr. Burns? You stayed away from the alligators, didn't you?
I tried, Mr. Rabinbark, but sometimes there were more than a few at the same time.
Thank you so much.
Yes, indeed. We will miss you.
We appreciate everything you've done, Dr. Burns. Thank you. You have been a bright light for us since the day you walked in the door. Thank you very much.
I know everybody sent him. You've done a great job, and we're so blessed to have had you here, so thank you so much.
Again, thank you, board members. I have enjoyed working with each of you, and I'm looking forward to the great work that's going to continue.
Well, with that, I will move on to item number two, closed session. So, I'd ask for a motion pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143-31811A1, A3, and A6, to consult with the board's attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege, to consider personnel matters, and to maintain the confidentiality of personnel records, North Carolina General Statutes 115C-319 and 321, and of student records rendered confidential under the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, 20U.S.C. 1232G.
Move for closed session pursuant to the statutes. Mr. Bullier?
Thank you, Mr. Bullier. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Ms. Nichols?
Hello.
I believe Ms. Justice was the second.
That's right.
All right. Ms. Bowie, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Eastep?
Aye.
Mr. Wortman? Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
And Mr. Rabinbark?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes six nothing. We are now in closed session. We will... Open session, open part of the meeting back to order. We are on item number three, approval of the agenda. Actually, Ms. Bowie, would you mind calling the roll, just to make sure everyone is back?
Lisa Eastep?
Here.
David Wortman? Stephanie Adams?
Here.
Judy Justice?
Here.
Jeanette Nichols?
Here.
Bill Rabinbark?
Here.
Stephanie Adams?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, sounds like we have everyone back. So, moving to item number three, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions at this time? Ms. Nichols, I believe that you wanted to amend the policy portion of the agenda.
Can we just do it when we get to that part? Well, we can say that we're only going to, for first reading, present policies 1 through 15. Well, they aren't 1 through 15, I'm sorry, 2200 through 2430 we'll be presenting for first reading tonight.
All right.
As well as the policies that we ask, will ask the board to waive.
Okay, thank you. With those changes noted, are there any other changes or deletions at this time? Hearing none, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Move for approval. Mr. Bullier?
Second. Bill Rabinbark.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Ms. Bowie? Aye.
Mr. Wortman? Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
And Mr. Rabinbark?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes six nothing. Item number four, approval of the minutes. We have one set of minutes, the interim meeting minutes for January, I'm sorry, gosh, July Is there a motion to approve the interim meeting minutes for July 28th?
Move to approve. Mr. Bullier?
Is there a second?
I second, Mrs. Nichols.
Thank you. Are there any changes to those minutes to be noted? Hearing none. Ms. Bowie, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Eastep?
Aye.
Mr. Wortman? Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
And Mr. Rabinbark?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes six nothing. Item number five, information. Item A, policies for first reading. Policy chairperson, Ms. Nichols?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, we are working with the North Carolina School Board Association to completely revise our policy manual. Policies we're presenting tonight are coming from the July Policy Committee meeting. So, we'll start with, and I'll go slowly so that they can pull them up for you. We'll start with 1710. Now, these policies, the first ones that we're going to ask you to consider very carefully because I'm going to ask you to waive the first reading for these six policies that I'm presenting at this time. So, the first one is discrimination and harassment prohibited by federal law, and I'm going to ask Ms. Stagner if she will go through each of these policies for us.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. The first five policies that we'll review are the Title IX and related policies. The Title IX federal regulations have been revised quite significantly, and they will go into effect August 14th. This will require the school board to have in place new policies to address those new federal regulations. The School Boards Association spent a lot of time developing these policies, and unfortunately, the short turnaround did not get them to us in time for the policy committee, but I will tell you that our Title, your Title IX coordinator, Mr. Jarrell Lewis, and I spent quite a bit of time reviewing them, and we've gone through and made some changes that I will point out. Other than those where there are some options and some ability to choose among some different policy language, by and large, this is going to be mandated by the federal regulation, so there is not a lot of room for revision or for customization. The first policy, this discrimination and harassment prohibited by federal law, is for those types of discrimination that are not the Title IX sexual harassment discrimination. So, we have discrimination on the basis of race, sex, color, national origin, religion, disability, or age, and this is a policy that is required by federal law. This has to be made, the statement of nondiscrimination. We have customized this one to add and address the Ethics 360 reporting, and so you will see that as a change in this policy from the School Boards Association standard language. We also included the Say Something Anonymous reporting system that is mandated by state law that there be an anonymous reporting program for each middle and high school student to access. I added a little bit of language about when it might be appropriate to consult with the board attorney on some of these investigation matters. I think it is important that the investigator understand which perhaps law is going to be implicated. And then, at the end, I would note that there is language about retaliation being prohibited. And then, we've changed that language a little bit based on some feedback that I had gotten from the Office for Civil Rights. And then, at the very end, is a list so that the public will know who the contact persons are for the district for various types of civil rights laws. Section 504 Coordinator for Students, Section 504 and ADA Coordinator for Employees, and then we have two others at the end, Age Discrimination and Coordinator for Other Nondiscrimination Laws. At the time that I got these policies to be posted, we did not have things to fill in those, and I would ask, I don't know if Dr. Burns has those at this time, but those, we would just fill in the name and email address of those two coordinators before the policy is posted on the board's website.
And Ms. Stagner, we do not have that information, but we will obtain that and provide it before the policies are posted.
Thank you. If there are any questions about this one, we can move to the next, which is Policy 1720. And you'll see that these do have multiple numbers. That means that they will be located at various places in the policy manual once it's complete. So, 4,000, the number that starts with 4,000 is for the student series, and the 7,000s are the personnel series, and then you'll have the 17, which is the general board series. Any questions about that one? Okay. You could go to the next, 1720, please. Okay, so this is the nondiscrimination on the basis of sex. This is the new language that's required and the information required by the Title IX federal regulations, and this includes the contact information for the Title IX coordinator and provides additional information for individuals that want to know how to get in touch with the Title IX coordinator, and again, prohibiting retaliation and notice of the board's nondiscrimination policy. This is required by federal law, and so this policy will meet that requirement. Any questions? If not, we can move to 1730, I'm sorry, 1725. And you'll see, these are all very long policies, so I won't go through, you know, line by line. I will point out, you'll see one strike through here. This is a policy about reporting. So, sexual harassment under Title IX has a very specific definition, and this is about reporting sexual harassment under Title IX. The resolution process has both a formal, it can have, under federal law, a formal and informal component. Informal is not required by law, and because the district does not have in place an informal resolution process at this time, Mr. Layer of Training and Process that would have to be built up and put into place, and he recommended that the policy not refer to an informal resolution process where that process doesn't currently exist. It does not mean the board cannot at some point come back and include an informal resolution process, but for right now, the only processes that are in place and will be in place, and administrators and investigators and others are having training on, which is a very important component, is the formal resolution process. So, that's why that language is struck through. This is a policy that talks about the reporting and what can be reported, what should be reported, what is sexual harassment, what are the examples of the criteria to determine whether it's sexual harassment, where options are allowed. Mr. Lewis has recommended certain alternatives. Again, we've included the contact information for the Title IX coordinator. We've included the Ethics 360 language for reporting. The policy defines what is mandatory reporting for school employees and board members, so if there's any actual knowledge or allegations of sexual harassment, there's a mandatory reporting to the Title IX coordinator. There will also be administrative regulations that go along with this that are in much greater detail that the School Boards Association has provided, but that is a regulation that doesn't have to be approved by the board, but the superintendent, Title IX coordinator, and I will be going through that to make sure that it's comprehensive. And, let's see. One other thing I wanted to point out in this one, I think, is that there is, that's the next one. So, unless there are any questions about this policy, we can move on to the sexual harassment grievance procedure. So, we've covered the reporting. Now, we're going to cover what the grievance procedure is. And again, this is a very, the federal regulations are very prescriptive about what has to be included in the grievance process, and so this policy is going to spell that out in a lot of detail. Again, talking about filing a formal complaint, filing just a report is different than filing a formal complaint that is something that the Title IX coordinator will take action on. And so, that is defined in here, what has to be in the formal complaint, how to file a formal complaint, who can file a formal complaint. The Title IX coordinator will have some discretion to file a complaint on someone's behalf if he feels that it requires that. I wanted to point out this, I left the comments on here from Mr. Lewis because I thought it was helpful for you to see. We talked a great deal about how someone would know where to file a formal complaint and how to do it, and so it's addressed in the policy. It can also be done on Ethics 360, and then Mr. Lewis's comments there is that he will post a downloadable complaint form on the Title IX website and give directions on how to file a complaint. So, again, that comment will come off when the policy is posted, but I wanted the board to see that. Title IX, the new regulations require equitable treatment, and so there has to be notice given to both the victim and the accused about the different processes, and this goes into great detail about the equitable treatment. Again, I mentioned training. Training is going to be a huge component for the Title IX implementation. Mr. Lewis has already given a lengthy training on the overview of Title IX. Investigators and decision-makers and appellate decision-makers are going to also have training, and we expect that perhaps we will even have some training for the board members so that you'll be familiar with what's going on and what the reporting requirements are. There is information about the burden of proof. Again, this is going to be a really, a different process than anyone has been used to before, and we're just going to be sure that we try to have as much training, as much information out there for school folks that are trying to implement this as possible. The timeliness is the last, I think, modification to this, and that's on page six of 18. There is not a set time that an investigation has to be completed or adjudication. The School Board Association policies recommend or come with a default of 90 days. Mr. Lewis suggested that he would prefer 120 days to allow him time to make sure that the whole process is completed. I just made a note there that in certain cases, the timeline might need to be resolved more quickly because you do have an interplay with some state law about personnel suspensions, et cetera, so there may be a need to have that resolved more quickly. And then, there is just additional language, again, about the grievance process, the appeal process, what the grounds for an appeal are. There may be grounds for appeal in a different situation, under a different statute, like a student suspension appeal, and there's going to be a lot of tension between making sure that Title IX is compliant, but that we're also providing the due process to students under the student discipline laws of North Carolina. Are there any, oh, and then at the very end, you'll see that the informal resolution process portion of this draft policy has been struck through because, again, we don't have that informal, and that's on page 16, that informal resolution process is not in place right now. It's something that could certainly be added back later. Any questions about the grievance process policy? The last one of the set of the Title IX and related, this is not exactly a Title IX policy, but 7232 is related because this addresses other types of discrimination and harassment in the workplace. So, there's Title VII, which is employment anti-discrimination law, prevents discrimination on the basis of race and color and religion, national origin, sex, and age is covered under another statute, Age Discrimination Employment Act. But this, again, covers all of those types of employment discrimination that is not Title IX sexual harassment or sex discrimination. And so, just to be sure that everything is comprehensively covered, School Board Association recommended this be adopted along with the Title IX policies. So, if there are not any questions, those are the Title IX and related policies, and as Ms. Nichols said, we would recommend that in order to comply with the August 14th deadline for implementation under federal regulations, that the first reading of these five policies be waived and that they be adopted at this meeting.
So, Madam Chair, we'll need a motion to approve them.
Thank you.
We need first a motion to waive first reading and then a motion to adopt.
All right. Is there a motion to waive first reading on Policies 1710, 1720, 1725, 1726, and 7232?
Madam Chair, I move to waive first reading on those policies. Mr. Bullier?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Rabinbark.
Thank you. Ms. Bowie?
Lisa Eastep?
Aye.
David Wortman? Stephanie Adams?
Aye.
Nelson Bullier?
Aye.
Judy Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
Bill Rabinbark?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye. Sorry about that.
Thank you. The motion passes to waive first reading, six nothing. Now, is there a motion to approve Policies 1710, 1720, 1725, 1726, and 7232?
Move for approval. Mr. Bullier?
Is there a second?
Second. Bill Rabinbark.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Ms. Bowie?
Ms. Eastep?
Aye.
Mr. Wortman? Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
And Mr. Rabinbark?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes six nothing.
Ms. Stagner, Ms. Stagner and Mr. Lewis, if you're watching, I do want to thank you guys. I know this has been a lot of work in a very short amount of time, so thank you both for working so hard to get these policies in line with the federal guidance.
Yes, we all agree. Thank you. The next policy that I'd like... The next policy that I'd like the Board to consider to waive first reading and to adopt is Policy 5400, Naming or Renaming of a School or Facility. And so I'll ask Mrs. Stagner again if she will go through this. But I do want to point out that in speaking with Mrs. Eastep about this policy, because she was with us on the Policy Committee, during the Policy Committee meeting, but on the 30th, after we had had the Policy Committee meeting, you can see that there was a paragraph that was inserted, and she and I discussed, and since it was not part of the committee meeting, and we're not sure that it's pertinent, we want it to be, not be considered as part of this draft agenda or draft policy.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. As Ms. Nichols, as you said, this policy was discussed at length at the Policy Committee meeting. And the language, everything except that highlighted section was language that the Policy Committee wanted to put forward. Ms. Eastep and I had had some discussion about that highlighted language, and I added that just for consideration, but it certainly was not something that the entire committee put forward. And it sounds like you do not want that to be included for consideration now. This is really just based on your old existing policy for naming, but we've added in language about renaming as well and made it clear that it would be schools and facilities. And that the important change in this is the Policy Committee's recommendation that any new or renamed schools or facilities will only be named for geographic terms related to the portion of the county or the area of the county that is served. For facilities, there may be something that is important to that particular school or has particular meaning, such naming after a gymnasium after a particular mascot or school motto or term. But other than that, the general rule was going to be only geographic terms.
Is this open for discussion at all right now? Or are we waiting?
No, this is perfect time for discussion.
Okay. I had been, I'd heard about this, and I've thought a lot about this. That is a way to avoid problems down the line, but on the other hand, it's also not necessarily receptive to what the community might actually want, considering something that might come up with a person or an individual they feel strongly about. So that's negating that opportunity. I mean, it might be the safe way to go, and actually, in a way, I feel it should be because of what we've been through. But is that really fair to our community? Well, I do think that naming after a person, if you want, it might be in other circumstances too, but a person of some note that the majority, the vast majority of the community is behind, might be something that if we negate that, that wouldn't be fair to have, the community wouldn't have a voice that they might want to have. I'm just putting that in there if anybody else would like to comment on that point.
I would say it's equitable. I don't know about fair. I'd say it's equitable. It's a policy that...
Equitable, same word. I mean, I'm saying that the community...
Yeah, I would say it is equitable. I understand, you know, there are plenty of times where passions rise after a death, after a retirement, and that's exactly, in my opinion, the wrong time to make a decision. We don't know what tomorrow brings for any individual. We don't know how history judges. More importantly, as great as today's high school football coaches, one 20 years from now could be even better. I just think that, you know, you can do different things to honor somebody that you feel strongly about, a wall, a plaque, a mural.
I'm speaking for the people that aren't having a voice here. I think that, I believe, I've actually heard that from people that have seen this because it was posted. And in fact, I am relaying that. I myself understand all that we have been through because of the problems with naming. On the other hand, that's an awful lot to take out of the hands of the public that, you know, times are changing, but people still need to have a voice.
That would be something for future boards to sit down like we're sitting down tonight and change the policy if they needed to. And they can. But, you know, some of the problems that we've had, I think...
Mr. Anderson, when's the last time a school in New Hanover County was named after an individual? I'm sorry, when was the last time a school in New Hanover County was actually named after an individual? I believe it's been a long time.
Eddie, come on, let... I think the last time any facilities were named after individuals may be Veterans Park. That was in 2001.
But really, that's, in the grand scheme of things, isn't that far back? I mean, a board can in the future change this.
Yes, absolutely.
But, you know, my feeling is why do that? That's a problem that we've had, and that's because people didn't do the research they should have. But that was the times. Times are changing. I just hate to have that, have to be revisited in the future and change it again when, you know, that just takes a big chunk out of what we could possibly do that would be responsive to the community now. Have to go through, again, go through another hoop of some kind in the future.
I would argue that this actually, to Mr. Bullier's point, this makes it more equitable because you could have an honor wall. And so this way, there's no argument of somebody is more worthy than somebody else to have their name on a stadium, on a building, on a school, when you could honor all of them by putting them on the wall in a school or the wall of a stadium. It honors them all equally because they all have value. When you superimpose one above all, to me, that causes issues because then that means you can't honor any of the rest of them in the same way. So I believe that is why the Board in recent years has gone away from naming schools after individuals and has named them after geographic areas. I think it's the question around facilities, you know, individual buildings, stadiums, you know, certainly, we can talk about that further. But I maintain that when you name one school after one individual, it means you're then locked into that individual, and then no one else can get that honor.
Yeah, 45 schools. A lot of people, very valuable people, these schools have been named after, picked by the community and brought forward by the community. I'm saying that to stop this out of, in my opinion, fear because of what's happened to us now is not really addressing, moving forward with looking at the future in a different way. That's, you know, I can see what you're saying, but I don't think it's a matter of fairness. Fairness is not the issue here. It's the problems that have arisen when it comes to actually who they're named after. And surprise, surprise, history showed something we weren't aware of.
But it always does. How do you know that 20 years from now, somebody you name a school after isn't identified as Jack the Ripper? I mean, you don't know.
If that's the attitude, I'm relaying the community would like to have a voice. That's all I'm saying. I've had, as I said, this has been posted, people have contacted, and I'm just saying what they have wanted to say about the matter.
And we appreciate that, Judy.
That's what we're here for. I listen to the public, and I'm giving them a voice.
It's so confusing, it's so confusing...
I agree.
...to name it after people. Example is Walter L. Parsley Elementary School. That school's not named after the man that everybody is upset with from the coup in 1898. It's named after his grandson, I believe. That guy would have to be 150 years old for it to be named after him. But everybody's going back and saying, it's named after that guy. It's not named after that guy. It's not. And that's what's confusing about it. If they had just named it Parsley Elementary, woo, we wouldn't even be sitting here talking about it right now.
I don't think so. I think that'd still be an issue.
Well, it might, but I don't think so.
Anyone else have a comment or question?
So are we striking, we are striking the paragraph in pink about the Board encourages the school principal?
Yes, yes, please. And now I ask that we consider waiving first reading and then consider adopting the policy.
Move to waive first reading. Mr. Bullier?
Second, Bill Rabinbark.
All right, there's a motion and a second to waive first reading on Policy Number 5400. Ms. Bowie?
Ms. Eastep.
Aye.
Mr. Wortman. Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Bullier.
Aye.
Ms. Justice. Ms. Nichols.
Aye.
Mr. Rabinbark.
Motion passes five one. Now we need a motion to accept Policy Number 5400.
Move to approve policy. Mr. Bullier?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Bill Rabinbark.
There's a motion and a second. Ms. Bowie?
Ms. Eastep.
Aye.
Mr. Wortman. Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Bullier.
Aye.
Ms. Justice.
Aye.
Ms. Nichols.
Aye.
And Mr. Rabinbark.
Motion passes five one. Thank you.
The following policies are on for first reading, and in some cases, some of them are new policies. And Policy Committee meetings have been long and quite involved, and we appreciate any input from the Board members. So the first one, Policy 2200, Election of Officers and the Organization of Board. It's very clear, I think, on how this policy will affect the Board. Mrs. Stagner, do you need to add anything?
I don't think so on this one. It's pretty straightforward.
All right, so these are all for first reading. The next policy, Official School Spokesperson. This is 2220. And this is important for Board members to understand and to follow. So it's very important that you look at the red information. And I want to point out, too, that one of the additions to the policy is that when we speak to the media outlets, we notify the Board and the Superintendent as soon as practical so that if we, as an individual, get a call, we're aware that others have been interviewed and so that we are aware of the need to work with the media. Anything on this one? Any questions?
Can I, and I see no problem, but can I ask a question? So the red, the policy code itself is the one that we got from the School Board Association, correct?
Yes.
And then the red is what we have added, the Policy Committee itself for the first reading for us to consider for the next time. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Good question.
And Ms. Justice, some of the red was language that was added by McKenna Osborne with the School Boards Association based on existing policies. So she incorporated some language from the Board's existing policies.
From our old policies, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. The next policy, Board Meetings, Policy 2300. Again, Ms. Justice, you can see what the red, that was taken from our policies and
How about the other 20 meetings we haven't had yet?
Well, those are the Dale Byrne Policy meetings.
I like the applicant we talked to that said they got paid $25 a meeting.
Oh, yes.
I'd be rich.
Really? You can take a long vacation if we can ever go anywhere again.
Absolutely.
So as you look through it, you have any questions or comments? And this is one of the reasons that we decided that we would not present all of the policies from the committee from July because we want to ensure that you have ample time, even though they were posted last week, that you have ample time to go through them and ask questions and make comments so that when we are ready for second reading, that we are truly ready. So this one, I think, is pretty clear. It doesn't, it just explains in detail more about our meetings. So if there are any more comments, we'll move on to 2310, Public Participation at Board Meetings. So if you go down to B on page one, Public Comment, there are some changes or some in red that came from policy and from, you know, policy and discussions. And this took a lot of time because what, we wanted to ensure that the public had time to address the Board. And we wanted to be fair about the time, and we talked about procedures and how we would go about finding a way that we could hear from all community members who wanted to share their thoughts.
Where...
Ms. Bowie, I think you, yeah, thank you.
The first reading. Very good.
Ms. Nichols, is that, are we...
I'm waiting to see if anyone has, because it took a while, I suppose, to review that.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. What did you...
I'm sorry. I was waiting to see if anyone had a suggestion or a comment. Any questions from anyone? Okay, very good. So let's move on to 2320, Compliance with Open Meeting Laws. Mrs. Stagner, if you'd like to address this one, please.
Yes, this really is a policy that sets out and, you know, the language from the Open Meetings Law, what's required for the Board to comply with that, including notice, keeping of minutes, and closed sessions. And these are also addressed in other policies. But this is, again, fairly straightforward. The, there is a little bit that was added to come, to add in with, with what you have in your existing old policies.
Okay, do you have any, any questions about twenty-three-twenty? If not, we'll move on to twenty-three-twenty-one, closed sessions. And Mrs. Stagner, if you want to share anything about closed sessions for us, please.
Again, so closed session is something that's very, um, regulated by statute and so this sets out the, the, um, nine statutory, uh, reasons that you, that the board may go into closed session. So that really just tracks the, the statute, um, talks about actions that must be reported or taken in open session. So there are things that if the board, uh, takes some action that may be authorized to take in closed session, such as approving a settlement, it has to be reported out. There is clarification about what you may not talk about in closed session. And then the procedure for going into closed session and the keeping of minutes and a general account of the closed session. So really, this policy tracks very closely the statute and the law that's developed around, um, open meetings and closed sessions.
Okay. Do you have any questions about twenty-three-twenty-one? The next policy, twenty-three-twenty-five, board meetings, board meeting news coverage. And this is basically, um, the red is part of our, our previous policy. Any questions about this particular policy? Okay, pardon? Okay, so let's move on to twenty-three-thirty, board meeting agenda. All for me was the format, placing items on the agenda. We're following pretty much the same guidelines that we've had before. So, um, we did change the, board members will receive a copy of the proposed, then to five days prior to the meeting. So that gives us more time to, to look through the information. Okay? Next, any questions? Twenty-three thirty-five, advanced delivery of meeting materials. And again, it's changed from four to five day, or days, or days, and we know what days mean calendar days. Twenty-three forty, parliamentary procedures. And nothing has changed in that one. We just follow Robert's rules of order and he would be proud of us. Policy twenty-three forty-one, quorum. And notice the cross-reference because of our remote participation in board meetings. So we can refer to that policy if we have any questions. This is the next policy, the voting method. Uh, there was no corresponding policy to twenty-three forty-two, so, um, this is basically a new policy that explains how we go about voting. Any questions? The next policy, twenty-four hundred, board policies. It talks about the developing and the revision of policies. Okay? The next policy, twenty-four ten, policy development, adoption and review. And again, we're following all the guidelines. And as we're doing tonight, we're presenting them for first reading and for the public to have access in case anyone wants to give comments. And the last of the first reading policies, uh, twenty-four thirty, dissemination and preservation of policies. So some of the information that we've had before was not necessary. So, Mrs. Stagner, you want to add anything about any of the policies or this particular one?
No, for this one, I think that there was quite a bit of discussion about, um, how the policies are really all available online and electronically and it, it wasn't necessary to refer to keeping paper copies of those policy manuals in the schools. Uh, there will be access in the school, in each school to a terminal that the public can access the policy manual on though.
Yes, and, and, uh, it's very easy to, to find the old policy and the new policy and, um, keeping up with everything. So we appreciate the assistance from everybody who's working with the revision of this manual. So that completes our first reading and our waiving of first reading policies and we appreciate all the, um, input. Thank you, Mrs. Doc, uh, Ms. Stagner for all your help and for Mr. Ravenbark and Mr. Bullier who serve on the committee and gave great insight to the policies.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. And I might just add, just so that, um, the other board members are aware and the public is aware that the School Board Association is going to add a, um, correlation table to that. So when you get to the landing site, when you look at the policy, um, manuals and you have the option to go to the old policies and the new policies, they're going to add a correlation table so you can see which ones, um, correlate, the old ones and the new ones, and you can find more easily during this, this transition period, um, which ones you might be looking for.
Yes, thank you for that. And I know Dr. Burns is going to help us with that, so. We're all working together, thank you very much. So that concludes our policy first readings, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you to Person Nichols and thank you to the policy committee and Ms. Stagner and to the School Boards Association for the, for the work. It's a lot of, uh, a lot of work to put this together. All right, moving on to item B, federal financial report, uh, for Head Start, Mr. Bullier?
All right. Madam Chair, members of the board, good evening. Before I begin tonight, I just wanted to briefly say that I have had the privilege of serving, uh, in this role since my appointment and, uh, I've gotten to know Ms. Miles, her wonderful team, uh, and some of the great work that we've done. And as we move forward, um, you know, in a few months when things turn over, I would like to publicly state that it would be my desire to continue in that role, whoever the, uh, the appointing person happens to be, because this is a, this is a fun job, um, working with, with Shannon. So we have a few items tonight, a few extra items, and we have one action item for, uh, for the board's consideration, uh, but we'll begin with our monthly Head Start liaison report. Our funded enrollment is two-hundred-and-sixty, and by the way, we went back to school this week with our little ones, our three and four-year-olds, um, as back to school as we can be, given the current limitations, but our enrollment is two-hundred-and-sixty students, sixty-one three-year-olds, a hundred-and-twenty-four-year-olds. Moving on to the next appendix, and just keep, just keep scrolling down, actually, I keep forgetting, we moved back to the same one. New Henry County Schools Head Start Monthly Report of Expenditures for May two thousand nineteen through April two thousand and twenty. I mentioned every time that we're a month behind, um, when you're looking at this, you're seeing it a month and a rears. But you can see our budget, uh, for last fiscal year, or our last academic year, was two million sixty-three thousand eight-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars. And believe it or not, our expenditures are right on the money. One million two-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand of that went to salary, five-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand three-hundred-and-seventeen dollars of that went to benefits, so that's where most of our expenditures come from, hundred-and-forty-three thousand dollars, hundred-and-forty-three thousand six-hundred-and-eighty-eight for professional, professional and technical services and sixty-three thousand nine-fifty-three for supplies. So you can see, flip over, uh, keep scrolling down. And for May two thousand and twenty through April two thousand and twenty-one, the reporting period ending on six-thirty-two thousand and twenty, uh, you can see where we at, we are at, uh, with our budgeting and our goals. We meet them every year. All right, so moving on, uh, again, one of the cooler parts of the job is getting to tell you about all the good work that, uh, Ms. Miles is, oh, do we have the in-kind? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, our monthly in-kind report. Yes, um, our in-kind contributions for school location in June, May and June were thirty-seven thousand one-seventy-three and in June they were twenty thousand three-hundred-and-sixteen, so, um, you can see that, um, from May to April, so far, we've spent fifty-seven thousand four-hundred-and-ninety dollars, um, for a total expenditure of sixty thousand three-hundred-and-ninety-one in-kind. In-kind contributions are contributions that are not monetary but have a monetary value. So, and that is just a monthly reporting. All right, so my favorite part of my job, I get to take, uh, responsibility for work I had nothing to do with. You know, it's really tough for all of our students to deal with COVID. It's particularly challenging for our Head Start team to educate three and four-year-olds remotely. It presents its own unique challenges, um, its own unique issues. And so tonight, I just want to share with you, and this is just for information, um, what we've accomplished and, you know, what's next. So if you could just pull up item B. Our outcomes report for two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, and again, I think this is pretty cool. I think you guys are going to be really excited when you see what we were able to accomplish and, uh, maybe a little disappointed when you see what we could have accomplished. So what are our pre-K students learning? They're learning most of the same things that our K-12 students are learning, social, a social and emotional well-being, uh, language, of course, cognitive skills, uh, physical skills, gross and fine motor skills, uh, mathematics, getting those young brains as equipped as possible to, to handle what's coming, and literacy, uh, phonological awareness, recognition of sounds, understanding concepts of print, comprehending stories and demonstrating writing skills. These are all things that you're doing, uh, at three or four to get your students in kindergarten ready to learn. I think that's really the key here. Growth by domain, this is a cool slide. So, um, at the beginning of the year, we test our students, and I'll let Shannon talk about how you test three and four-year-olds, it's not as, uh, it's obviously not quite like we do with our older students. Beginning of the year, um, cognitively speaking, fifty-two percent were meeting expectations for our three-year-old students. This is for cognitive learning. In the middle of the year, middle of your testing, that number was seventy-seven percent. For language, it was fifty-three percent at the beginning of the year, up to seventy-five percent at the middle of the year. Literacy went from thirty-three percent to sixty-two percent. Mathematics started at forty-one percent, by the middle of the year, uh, we were at seventy-three percent. Physical learning, seventy-five percent, beginning of the year, meeting or exceeding expectations, up to eighty-four percent, middle of the year. And social, emotional well-being and growth, fifty-four percent, up to seventy-six percent. That's impressive. That is really impressive. Uh, you, you just would have loved to have seen that line go a little further because I, I think it would have been, uh, all the way up to a hundred. Four-year-olds, same numbers, you can look at, uh, cognitive thirty-nine to seventy-five percent, language fifty to seventy-eight percent, literacy forty-three to eighty-two, mathematics thirty to sixty-nine, uh, physical learning fifty-seven to eighty-seven, and social and emotional thirty-nine, up to eighty-five. So you can look at the overall numbers, um, every single one of them was above seventy percent. Overall, uh, we made significant growth from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year. Every single, you know, every single one of our scores was over seventy percent and many well over seventy percent. So that, that is a credit to Ms. Miles and to our Head Start and pre-K staff and all the wonderful work that they do. Things to celebrate during remote learning, uh, which started for our pre-K students on March fifteenth and ended June fifth. Teachers engage children in learning opportunities using remote learning platforms such as Class Tag, Class Dojo, Remind, Zoom, Facebook, YouTube, social distance home visits to drop off family reading books, supplies and food, English and Spanish paper, crayon, pencil, learning packets. Eighty-six percent of two-hundred-and-twenty-three students, eighty-six percent of our students participated in Ready, Rosie Parent Education Programs. They watched two thousand four-hundred videos and they had five thousand learning opportunities. And again, I just can't emphasize enough that we're talking about three and four-year-olds. That is, that is quite an achievement. So now what? Seventy percent or more, like we said, are proficient in middle of the year in all domains for all students. Eighty-point-eight percent average weekly family participation in school activities through engagement activities, educational activities and remote learning. And, uh, our response to two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, our social, emotional learning primary focus, uh, remote learning, uh, we start at the beginning, engaging parents as collaborators and education through remote platforms. And again, I'm just so proud to, to stand up here representing Ms. Miles. Ms. Miles, if you're on the line, can you please talk just a little bit about, uh, what it's like to test three and four-year-olds and, and how we come up with these metrics?
Yes, sir, thank you so much, excellent job. Wanted to, uh, give a big shout-out to Dr. McCarty and her classroom teaching staff. Great data to report, especially ending in March, um, again, to echo what you said earlier, um, the things we could have done, um, until, to measure those in June. So how do we test these youngest learners in New Henry County Schools? How do we collect this data? Well, we do it through formative assessment. We are using teaching strategies goal, which is directly related to our standard course of study for early learning. We observe our children in a play-based model, organic learning settings, intentional learning experiences and practices. And we did this through photos, videos and other formats as evidence to show this growth or areas of improvement. We then translate into data points in the five domains of learning, as you saw on the slides, which is required by our state. Through this platform, we're able to produce individual student data during family conferences, which I feel is very important, so we can sit down with those parents and talk about, um, areas, uh, that their children, uh, showed tremendous growth and areas that were, we could do some improvement. It's important to note that this data helps us drive our individual instruction, um, and our necessary professional development for those funds that you just got to take the gap, and staffing as well. And you did such a great job, Mr. Bullier, um, but that is exactly how we do this. It is very authentic data, um, and directly correlated to what we're required to report on, so I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. And speaking of requirements, uh, I do have this final action item for you. Again, you're always, you know, you're always looking at your data, you're always looking at your success, your failures and trying to figure out how we can improve, and that's exactly, uh, what requires your action tonight, the New Henry County Schools Early Childhood Education Program Head Start Self-Assessment Improvement Plan, uh, for this coming academic year. We have several goals and I hope everybody had a chance to look at this, and it's been on the agenda for about a week. I'm sure Ms. Miles can answer, answer any of your questions. But you can see our goals, to increase parent leadership and participational parent involvement in all, uh, programmatic events, implement an evidence-based parent curriculum, uh, and you can see our action steps down here, I'm not going to go over each one in the interests of time, but I will answer any questions you may have. Utilize classroom assessment scoring system, um, Utilize classroom assessment scoring system. Build strong culture of safety at Johnson Pre-K to ensure all children are safely transported in accordance with Head Start program performance standards. Promote classroom communities by strengthening the social and emotional foundation that children have. Create a commonly-owned plan for success among program and school-building staff. And again, we need the board's approval tonight to implement this and to go ahead with this. So I would ask Madam Chair for a motion at this time to adopt that improvement plan.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Boyer. Are you making the motion?
Yes, ma'am. I will make the motion.
All right, so you're making the motion. Is there a second?
A second. Bill Rivenmark.
All right, Mr. Rivenmark is the second. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Bowie.
Ms. Eastep.
Aye.
Mr. Wartman. Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Boyer.
Aye.
Ms. Justice.
Aye.
Ms. Nichols.
Aye.
And Mr. Rivenmark.
Aye.
Motion passes six-nothing.
Madam Chair, that concludes the Head Start liaison report for the evening, and I thank the board's patience for the rather lengthy presentation tonight.
And Nelson, thank you so much for what you do.
Well, thank you.
I mean, I mean from the bottom of my heart, thank you for what you do.
Well, thank, thank you, and please thank, thank our director and Dr. Smith and really all of us. It's a tough job, so thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer.
Under information, there was a federal financial report.
I did not receive the federal financial report. Oh, yes. Yes, and again, this is, this is just for information. Our federal financial report is just for information. I hope everybody had a chance to look at it. I did forget to print it out, but I can see it from up here. Are there any questions on this? This is just a requirement by federal law, requires no action on, on your part. It's just something we are required to report to the board.
I'm good.
It doesn't appear that we have negative cash on hand. Is that just timing?
Ms. Miles?
Yes, ma'am. This is your semi-annual report. We attended a training in February and recently learned that this is required to share with your governing boards, such as Policy Council and Board members. So this is information only to let you know that we are meeting those financial reporting requirements. And at the end, Madam Chair, you will see the certification, and it's submitted by our finance team, whom do an excellent job for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And this concludes our report for the evening. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Boyer. Thank you, Ms. Miles. Moving on to Item Six, Recognition of Achievement. Item A, recognitions. Ms. Gibson?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. The following are the organization's schools, teachers and students who we feel honored to recognize tonight. Community partner Cape Fear Collective and school showcase video presenter Alderman Elementary
Good evening. My name is Megan Lewis, Director of Programs with Cape Fear Collective. We're excited to join you tonight as part of the community spotlight. Cape Fear Collective aims to be equity-focused, data-driven, and human-centered. We were founded in April of 2019 out of the corporate philanthropy sector of Live Oak Bank. Our mission is to scale big data, fundraising, social innovation, and large-scale initiative management to the Cape Fear region. As part of scaling this big data, we are working to complete a community data platform. More detailed information on this community data platform can be found in the Metrics That Matter document that was shared with you. Essentially, we're developing a cloud-based, public-facing, community data platform by incorporating data gleaned from regional anchor institutions, publicly available sources, and partner organizations. We seek to collect data in the following sectors, including healthcare, social support, housing, public safety, education, transportation, et cetera. Cape Fear Collective was born out of the collective impact methodology. Essentially, collective impact seeks to bring people together in a structured way to achieve social change. It does so by sharing these five commonalities. A common agenda, everyone working towards the same goal. Shared data metrics among that coalition. Mutually reinforcing activities and programs and interventions. Continuous communication and backbone support. Cape Fear Collective provides this backbone support via administrative support, project management, data scientists, et cetera. Essentially, Cape Collective Impact seeks to bring you from what you see on the left of your screen, disorder and confusion, many groups working in different directions, to a collaborative action approach on the right. Essentially, all organizations rowing in the same direction. Many organizations here and collaboratives are already working on the right side of this screen, such as the Resiliency Task Force and Food Council that are contributing, that many different organizations are contributing to an overall mission. To date, I just wanted to highlight a couple of community partnerships where we've successfully partnered with New Hanover County Schools, one of which is the All Hands on Deck Platform. Cape Fear Collective is currently working with New Hanover County Schools to co-develop their All Hands on Deck volunteer platform, utilizing a new technology tool that will allow volunteers to more effectively sign up for opportunities through the school system and provide a stronger pipeline of volunteer support for years to come. Cape Fear Collective is leveraging the Collective Effort software platform, formerly known as Share Care Network, to support this project. Additionally, we've partnered with New Hanover County Schools and many other regional organizations to bring the Cape Fear Talent Survey to area employers. This effort asks questions of employers such as, you know, future hiring needs and even more specifically, the skills needed to complete those jobs so that we can share that information with not only the K-12 system but post-secondary, excuse me, post-secondary as well to, you know, improve upon the talent pipeline you're already creating. The results of this survey will be presented in a virtual format on September first and will absolutely share that information with the board and administration at New Hanover County Schools. Lastly, the partnership I wanted to highlight is with District C Cape Fear. District C Cape Fear is a regional partnership of District C, which is a nonprofit based in the Triangle. District C aims to coach educators and provide students with an experience of working in diverse teams to solve real-world, complex business problems. And working with the Shamika Schuford at the CTE Department of New Hanover County Schools, we have ten educators and administrators from CTE now in sixty-plus hours of professional development to be trained in this model, and additional other, four other community members also being trained, bringing a total of fourteen educators and community leaders trained in the District C model by this fall to then implement with their students across the district. Additionally, Cape Fear Collective, myself and Kevin Nower on our team, who are certified District C coaches, will be hosting a student experience from August tenth through fourteenth. These are fifteen rising juniors and seniors from across New Hanover County Schools recruited with the help from principals, administrators, and career development coordinators. Live Oak Bank and Cape Fear Public Utility Authority will be providing, will be their business partnerships for these fifteen students, so we look forward to that experience. Lastly, I just want to end with my contact information. If you have questions about anything I spoke to here or would like to learn more about Cape Fear Collective in general, please email me at nlewis@capefearcollective.org. And lastly, we just really look forward to continued partnership with New Hanover County Schools. You all are a critical partner in the work that we aim to do in this community, and again, just look forward to future opportunities.
Alderman Elementary is a small school with a big heart. Although we have one of the most visible locations among the elementary schools in the district, many in the community don't know much about us. We are excited for the opportunity to show you firsthand what's behind the doors of our little school sitting under the tall pines, to let you see the light in our students' eyes as they work with our incredible teachers, to let you hear the joy in our parents' voices as they join us for family events, to let our staff tell you what it means to serve our diverse school community. But as this year has shown each of us, life doesn't always work out the way we plan. Fortunately for me as principal, it's in times like these when Alderman is at its very best. Our motto is "Together We Shine," and our staff and students meet every challenge with joy, focus, and determination. And we do it together. I have invited some of our staff and students to share from a distance the values that make Alderman the school that it is, values that were true before this trying time, values that are helping us learn and grow through these challenges, and values that will serve us well long after we've made it to the other side.
Alderman is a community. We welcome every family with open doors, open minds, and open hearts. We know that family involvement leads to student success. At our many family events throughout the year, we celebrate our students together and share in joy and learning as a school community.
Alderman is service. Our teachers are always willing to help our students and families, even when they're not at school. Every day, we focus on being respectful, responsible, and kind. And kids of all ages get the opportunity to be of service to each other and to our
Alderman is flexibility. Even the best learning and teaching strategies won't work for every student. We pride ourselves in our agility and our problem-solving skills. We're flexible enough to try different tools and change course when needed so we can reach our goal of serving every student.
Alderman is growth. We encourage a learning mindset in everything we do, and we learn and grow together. We set ambitious goals for our students, our teachers, and our school. We support each other as we strive to grow into the school we know we can be.
Alderman is opportunity. Our school community is diverse, and our students form a rich tapestry of life experiences, challenges, and gifts. Each one deserves the chance to learn and grow to their full potential.
Every Alderman student gets the attention they need so they can become the best learner and best person they can be.
Alderman is optimism. We have faced challenges, big and small, but we work through adversity arm-in-arm without letting it define us. We are proud of how far we've come as a school community, but we also believe that our best days are always ahead of us. We can't wait to see what lies ahead for our students, our staff, and our school.
Ms. Gibson, does that conclude the recognitions?
That does. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Those are both very nice. Moving on to Item Seven, call to the audience. We have had, I believe, four sign up. Is that correct, Ms. Bowie?
Yes.
I'm not sure what the order is. Do you have the order?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. If you want to announce them as they... Okay. All right, thank you.
Amanda White?
Members and elite staff of New Hanover County Schools. My name is Amanda White, and I represent many educators in New Hanover County as the president of the New Hanover County Association of Educators. Our educators are disappointed about a few mandates, but we had zero say. The first disrespectful mandate focuses on the requiring of staff to attend work in person while multiple individuals have tested positive while working in buildings during the summer. Our educators do not need to be unnecessarily put at risk, and they can do their job from home regardless of their medical need. However, if there are educators that do need resources within their classrooms, they should have the freedom to get those resources or utilize a classroom when needed. Having up to a hundred and fifty people in a building at once is unnecessary during a pandemic. Making healthy individuals go into work, risking getting sick, and having to utilize sick days is a waste of resources and time that will negatively affect our educators and students. The second disrespectful mandate focuses on the utilization of edgenuity as a primary source for learning for our students. Our educators found that edgenuity's curriculum can be described as the following. It lacks interactiveness and engagement with students, teachers, and the content. There's little to no non-white male representation, thus having very little diversity and does not adequately represent all learners. And there's brutal accessibility to the content for all developing learners and even for some advanced learners. It is interesting that the lead teachers in Hanover County decided it was appropriate choice, given the New Diversity, Inclusion, and Equity Committee's mission statement. We did not, we did ask our teachers if they received emails asking for input or expressing concerns about edgenuity. There isn't much support to New Hanover County Schools' claim that lead teachers asked classroom teachers or made concerns known before the decision was made around utilization of edgenuity primarily for instruction. Additionally, edgenuity has only been used marginally in schools, mainly for students that cannot be in the same classroom as the teacher, not by a teacher for an entire class or for the majority of students within a school. We know our students will disengage from this curriculum, not see a diverse representation within the content, and fall further behind if they cannot access the curriculum due to wordage and the exclusive asynchronous nature of this curriculum. We have an opportunity to do this right. Let our educators meet the needs of our students through PLC-created curriculum that engage students and provide purpose to their learning during remote instruction.
The next one is from Barbara Anderson.
Good evening, school board members, and welcome Dr. Boss to New Hanover County. My name is Barbara Anderson, and I wish to first thank the board for putting the safety and health of our county students and staff first by choosing to proceed with Plan C. This plan will not only allow staff and educators to better prepare for online learning, as well as providing engaging and rigorous instruction for all students, it will also allow Mr. Anderson, his staff, and administration to fully implement onsite requirements for social distancing for the flexible Plan B when COVID is more manageable. As a retired media specialist in this county, I still wake up and wonder how students are going to manage remote learning, especially those in the black and brown communities, or the ones who are still homeless from hurricane storms or will become homeless due to the end of the eviction war, Jordan. I wonder if our decision-makers are thinking about our students who are living in the public housing projects or subsidized rent areas and their ability to access, access the tools and resources they need to be productive students. I am concerned that the need for digital and internet data is based on the online parent surveys. Many students in our county are being raised by grandparents who do not have access to desktops or laptops or tablets, much less smartphones. desktops or laptops, or tablets, much less smartphones. Many families may not have been notified due to their burner phones being expired. Is the survey really accurate? I am concerned that many of our students and families do not live within walking distance to their school to register their children for kindergarten, register transfers, or pick up their device. Many families rely on public transportation. Can you imagine taking your one, two, or more kids on the bus and then back again carrying laptops? Is that safe? I'm not sure walking from school with laptops will be safe either. Are you thinking of ways to meet those families in their spaces? I'm concerned that families who do not have access to transportation will not be able to use curbside pickups for meals at their school. That may be why your numbers for that service is so low. Will buses be used again under the same capacity as in the spring? I am concerned as to whether this school system will be able to provide all of the community demands for their children: education, babysitting, mental and social health, providing meals for the bus-facing food insecurity. COVID has created many challenges for everyone. I know that the administration has done much to plan around continuously moving goals and mandates, and I applaud the work group's efforts in finally adding educators to the decision-making table. That being said, I believe that this is an opportunity for New Hanover County Schools and the Board of Ed to work with parents and the whole community to meet those needs. It will only happen with laser focus on inclusion of all stakeholders: parents, educators in the classroom, support staff, administration, and the community. It will require full transparency as to all decisions and actions by the board. You have a community that wishes to be active in the education of the children of this county, and as the saying goes, it really does take a village to raise our children. People want to help. The question is, will you let us?
Next, we have Angela Kaney.
My name is Auntie Kaney, and I am a social worker, advocate, and parent. While extremely grateful for the safety priority in selecting Plan C, there are some concerns regarding our students in marginalized communities to keep in mind for future planning. We know the data collected through previous surveys is incomplete, with only half of our students being represented, incorrectly highlighting needs. Ironically, sending electronic surveys to measure access to electronics seems a bit contradictory. We know that more than twenty-two percent of students do not have remote learning devices, and that far more than four percent are in need of internet access. We also know that in a county where the majority of schools are Title I, far more than seventeen percent would take advantage of a nutrition program if we eliminated barriers to access this resource. The needs of our disenfranchised students increased exponentially for meal services when Ring and Run and partnering agencies were unable to continue their delivery service. We also know that the expectation for parents to be instructional coaches each day is not realistic. Many of our inner-city children are being raised by grandparents or in single-parent, multi-sibling homes, where parents are working multiple jobs. The many barriers that these families face will prevent them from being successful with remote learning without strategies of support. Yet, when I sit with teachers, I am encouraged to hear them speak of possibilities such as pod learning, where we utilize community resources along with our staff to form teams to bring remote outdoor services to students safely. Our teachers know that it's impossible for our children to come to us in some scenarios without transportation or the adults available to bring them, so they accommodate. The people to lead us to solutions are our teachers, because they know their students and the challenges they face better than anyone, which is why they need a voice. There is no excuse for planning of any kind to take place without teachers present. Failure to engage and to limit them of their creativity through forced implementation of curriculum such as edgenuity, which clearly places educators and students in a box, leaving them without the opportunity to strategically plan based on their strengths, is not wise. When we limit their flexibility and take away the option to teach from their homes, their community pods, and their classrooms if they choose, we stifle the learning process. I watched teachers grow in a matter of months from a crisis situation to one where they connected through socially-distanced visits and car parades, encouraging show-and-share activities virtually, and facilitating intricate discussions through Zoom, and watched students excel as a result. This proves that teachers don't need to be micromanaged, they need to be trusted to do what they do best, and included as professionals in these discussions. We also need to invest in and take advantage of our community partnerships and collaborate rather than remain exclusive during this time.
Our last call is from Sandy Isles.
Hi, my name is Sandy Isles, and I'm a parent of a rising third and seventh grader. I would like to thank the board for voting for Plan C for the first nine weeks. I recognize how incredibly difficult and complicated this situation is, and I appreciate the board voting with safety as the top priority. I want to share our experience with remote learning from this past spring and share some thoughts as we move into fall. No doubt, spring was difficult. Both my husband and I worked full-time, and we struggled to find our rhythm as a family. First, what worked well: all of my girls' teachers did a fantastic job navigating this unexpected situation. By the end of the spring semester, we had found our rhythm, and each week was easier. For my youngest, each day's assignments followed a consistent pattern. Specials teachers also posted assignments on their designated day. Her teachers used Seesaw, which allowed students and teachers to post videos and voice comments. Every Friday, my daughter had a class Zoom meeting. This kept the class connected and continued to build relationships virtually. For my oldest, who is an AIG student, it was a little more complicated, as she has had multiple core teachers. Once we understood each teacher's style for providing assignments, we were able to navigate them much easier. Teachers were always responsive to questions. My daughter's band teacher offered Zoom meetings to provide real-time instruction for students who needed help with specific assignments. This worked very well. So what needs improvement? For one, in the spring, there was not a clear goal as to why we were providing remote learning. Not clarifying this made it difficult for teachers and families to understand expectations. This will not be the case in the fall, as we know the purpose is to teach new content. Second, we need to prioritize personal relationships, as this is the foundation for learning. We need to focus on providing synchronous learning for all students as much as possible. My AIG student does not thrive in a predominantly asynchronous environment with rote learning. I am concerned that the edgenuity platform will not provide adequate synchronous learning if used for Plans B and C. Teachers need flexibility to creatively meet the needs of their students. They are experts and know what standards need to be taught and how. They're the same, that we get the best results when we let experts do their job versus dictating how they do it. I hope the administration and board will trust the expertise of our teachers so that they can do their jobs well without roadblocks. Finally, I encourage the board and district to work with community volunteers. Programs such as Ring and Rung did a fabulous job providing meals to our students. Please partner with our community to provide meals and educational resources. Ms. Adams said at Tuesday's board meeting, "This is a community issue. Please remove obstacles to allow community partnerships to meet our students' needs." Thank you.
All right, thank you to all our callers.
Lisa, I'd like to say, this morning, I got out and rode around town, and it was a wonderful thing to see all the teachers' cars parked at all the schools and see everything kind of getting kind of back to normal. I know it'll be a while before it does, but it was nice to see the teachers that wanted to get back to school get back there, and the ones that can't, I understand, but we're going to get back to some normalcy shortly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evan Bark. Item eight, head start, I believe we've already covered that, so we are on item nine, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Last Tuesday, New Hanover County, as in other southeastern North Carolina counties, woke up to the impact of a storm that turned into a hurricane. Your maintenance department, as I understand, occurs whenever there is such a storm, responded quickly, and they assessed the situation. There were many, many power outages, as you know, in the county and also in our schools. More than half of our schools were without power. The assessment thankfully indicated that there was very little damage to facilities. We had a little bit of water in a few cases, some roof leaks, but given the amount of rain and the wind, it was quite minimal. And so what we faced last Tuesday was significant power outage and a great deal of debris, which the maintenance department addressed quickly, and they were able to clear the debris and place it on the roadside for collection across the county. Because of the power outages primarily, students were not in school on Tuesday or Wednesday. Tuesday was the first remote learning day scheduled by the calendar for year-round, restart, and early college students. And so both Tuesday and again on Wednesday, once again due to the power outages, students did not engage in remote learning. Because of the way that your calendar is structured, there will be no need at this time for makeup for those days, because you have banked hours that allows those days to be absorbed. Employees either worked remotely on those two days, took leave, or they scheduled makeup time with their supervisor. And so again, for ten-month employees who are required to work two-hundred-and-fifteen days by the calendar law and their contract, there's no change to the calendar there, which I think is a very good thing. So they are now, in those schools, year-round, restart, and early college, engaged. They started full force on Thursday and have been working hard on remote learning. Yesterday, the ten-month employees in traditional calendar schools re-engaged, and as Mr. Evan Bark mentioned, many cars in the parking lot, and that is a good thing. Our employees returned to screening in each of the facilities. All employees are screened every day, and that will be the case for the foreseeable future. There has been a listing of the virtual open houses, the drive-by and the drive-in open houses provided for the community that are occurring this week for traditional schools, and device distribution is planned and underway. Next Monday, there will be the re-engagement in remote learning for traditional calendar schools, and it is impressive to me to learn of the great work that is going on. It's wonderful to have all of our employees re-engaged again, and I know they're eager to get back to as much of a normal situation as they can. I do think the time for remote learning is going to give the time necessary for the logistics to be worked out, and I feel very confident that in a period of weeks, you'll have a report that will be very encouraging, as you might make a transition at some point in the future. That, Madam Chair, members of the board, is my report this evening.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Burns. Are there any questions? I would like to add my thanks to the Maintenance and Operations Department for the speedy cleanup. I think that it would be accurate to say that this storm took us all by surprise, and the power outages were a lot greater than we thought, so we appreciate getting back up and running very quickly. All right, moving on to item ten, Board Chairperson's report. Mine's going to be fairly brief. I just want to say again, we've talked several times about Dr. Faust, and again, we are very excited to welcome him next month to, officially, to New Hanover County Schools. He will be joining us again from KPS Kansas City. His first official day here in the county will be September 1st, which is also our next regular board meeting day, so nothing like throwing him into the deep end. He will also be in the district next week. He will be meeting with different departments and learning more about our reopening plans and our progress, and meeting with staff. So he will probably also be in schools, that is, our first day of traditional school. So, and I also want to thank our PR department and Caress Clegg. We did a podcast last week. Allison Schaefer from the NCSBA and I participated in that podcast, and we talked about the hiring process. It, you know, it did take six months from start to finish to hire Dr. Faust, so we talked a lot about that, and I thought that was a very informative podcast. So again, thanks, Ms. Clegg, for that, for that opportunity. So that is my report. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, I will ask if we can take just a quick five-minute break for us long-suffering individuals here at the VOE, and then we will be back. It is eight thirteen, we'll be back here at eight, hopefully eight eighteen. Thank you.
Thank you.